All right, it is six o'clock, so we're getting time and we have the forum present. We'll call this meeting to order. First order of business, you have the copy of the agenda in preview with the consent agenda items. Is there any thing you need to explain about consent agenda?
No, here's all there, no changes.
Any questions for discussion concerning the consent agenda items? If not, then I would receive a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we're gonna change things just a little bit here and go on into executive session so that some folks can get home or get ready for school tomorrow. So I would at this time receive a motion to go into executive, during the regular meeting, go into executive session.
Second.
Motion been made in second to go into executive session.
Aye.
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 And aye. All right, so... .........................................................
Welcome back.
Thank you.
You just have our green card there.
Oh, we had to go have a heater going out there?
Yeah, we had to keep it on higher than that, too. It was resting this month.
So sorry we rushed you up.
Yeah.
Yeah, you did want it right there.
This is Gary, there's somebody else out there. We can try and plug them in.
All right, we'll move on to administrative reports. Who do you have up first?
Well, let's find out. I've got Mr. Rogers.
Oh, awesome.
Beautiful day in the neighborhood.
Beautiful day in the neighborhood.
Time for the Mr. Rogers report.
Yes, all right. How's everyone? Good?
We're good.
Okay, I hope that we've had a whole lot of school days we've had since January.
There you go. That's spring, you're looking forward.
But anyway, you started rolling us up. Three attendance is down a little bit with a lot of sickness going around. And 100% attendance, we had 168. About 234 over 95% attendance, which that's a concern. Again, there wasn't a lot of days because of the weather. But celebrations, I think I mentioned last time I was in here, we were going to NIXA, the STEM school. That went well. We went up primarily to visit the library. We ended up visiting classrooms, reading lessons, visited the principal sometimes. That ended up being very beneficial. We come up with some ideas, especially the technology side of things for our library, which that's what we wanted to do, is kind of expand and grow with our options in the library. So that went well. Also, last week, me, our preschool, Mrs. Spence, kindergarten, 2-3rd kindergarten teachers all met with Head Start representative Angie Kinder of West Plains. I think Chris will share some of this information a little later on. We're trying to form a positive partnership with them. Not that we don't have one now, but we want to grow and expand on that and get a little bit better. Help get kids kindergarten ready. Our numbers for kids, it's actually kindergarten ready based on our entrance exam. It's probably, it's less than 50%. I don't know the numbers, they're off top in my head. But we want kids to be more prepared for kindergarten because we come in a little bit behind each year. So this is our way of trying to improve that. And again, I feel good about it. It's a good plan in place. And I don't know if we've had one as a group before, so it's a good thing for us. This past week, it's Chamber Banquet, we recognize Teacher of the Year Nikki Wake. That was great, very deserving, great teacher, does a great job. So it was good, we appreciate the opportunity of the Chamber doing that to be able to recognize this teacher. Also, we had the Uganda Change for Change, I think I talked about that last, we're being elementary, won that challenge, that contest. We raised a total of $530, so that was a neat thing there. So a big thank you to elementary teachers of counting pennies and handling change, stuff like that. Bus drivers, I'm sure rolling around on bus floors, stuff like those things. So anyway, a lot of celebrations there, that's a few there. Upcoming events, 100% of schools got their move from tomorrow, yeah, tomorrow to Wednesday. So we prayed through the buildings, actually just sent some information to Mr. Smith and Mr. Johnson a little bit ago. A Spring Book Fair.
Just to be clear, you're saying parading, not pray, right?
Oh, I said praying.
Yeah.
We may be praying as well. Parade, parading, yeah. That's now on Valentine's Day, so we're going to add to our Valentine's party a little more chaos on here. Spring Book Fair, February 26th through March 1st. Again, this is the literati, it's no longer the scholastic, so we're continuing with that. And again, we feel good about that change. And also during that week, we have Family Night, which also coincides with our showcase night on February 27th. So they can come in and check out or visit our book fair and read and do some activities. Questions? All right.
I've got maybe a dumb one, probably is.
Oh, I doubt it.
100%, 100%, that's just for that month. Is what that means, like 168 for the month of January is perfect for kids.
168 kids, yeah. Okay. Anything else? All right, thanks guys.
Thank you.
Dr. John? Is this the right one? Is it not?
Yeah, no, that's it.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm like, I didn't have my paper and I'm like, that's not right. I don't know about you guys, but I'm really looking forward to that parade, 100 today.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we would open middle school up to anybody that wanted to come and view that. Numbers are holding pretty steady. We have had a little sickness here just recently, but with all the days missed, I think that's kind of helped with the weather. We did an intruder drill on the 26th of January, went really, really well. I think I was really shocked because I timed that and we had all of the kids out of the building in under 30 seconds. Wow. And that's really incredible. I mean, it was something. So they did a really good job with that. Mr. Cunningham does a great job orchestrating everything, all with Glenn, just really, really good. I feel good about that. So we had our staff breakfast and our staff meeting on the 7th. Public Sports went out on the 6th. Student Showcase is coming up on the 27th, I believe. So I look forward to that night, that's always a fun night, and hopefully it's a little bit better this year, gets a little bit better each year. The Bear Up Character Trait Assembly will be on the 1st, that's where we recognize those students for seven different character traits. And that's on the end of the third quarter, which is the 1st as well. The Highway Patrol, along with Arlene Anderson with the Rotary Club, will present Don't Meth With Me to all the 5th graders again. This is an annual presentation that they put on. And so it was good. Last year was the first year, obviously, that I've been a part of it, but it was really, really good. And I would also like to mention, now that I see that, the Water Patrol has been there presenting, going through Bother Safety Course with all of our kids in PD classes, which is really good. So they come out of there, they can purchase it, or they can just bank their score if they want to purchase a certificate later, because that part of it does cost money. But they all go through that and they all get their Bother Safety. So that's really good. Some celebrations, they're at the middle school pizza party for those students who read and passed tests on four of the Truman and Mark Twain nominees. We had 24 students earn that. And then on the 8th, they'll be taking a field trip to Springfield for those students who have at least 10 books right now. We currently have 17 that are already qualifying for that, so that's good. We've got our map testing dates set, so the 5th and 6th grade will be there in April on the 22nd through the 26th, 7th and 8th, the 29th through May 3rd, which is corresponding dates of last year when we did that. And then, yeah, we've been working on the master schedule at the middle school. We've got it real, real close. I know Ms. Henry's put a lot of time into that, and I really appreciate everything that she does with the schedule there. So it looks like we're going to make everything work. So any questions?
Are the books, the pizza parties, the Mark Twain, all that, is that for all grades in middle school, or is that a certain specific grade?
All grades.
All grades, okay.
Thank you.
We had a group of three students, two teachers that went to Kansas City, weekend before last, last weekend, to what was called Make 48 Competition. They were one of seven teams sponsored by Make 48, hosted at UMKC in conjunction with Project Lead the Way. Matty Four was one of those, along with Seth Wake and Nolan Perkins. Mr. Knapp and Ms. Lee took them up there. And they had 48 hours, they had a problem, they had to come up with a solution, they had to come up with a product, they had to come up with a marketing plan, and media presentation. And they took first place. We were by far the smallest school there, private school from St. Louis, some schools from Columbia, and schools from the Kansas City area. So when you get a chance, catch one of them if I'm talking about it, because they were very excited about the whole experience. But at some point, you'll get to see it on, it'll be on YouTube. It's like a reality series, they like followed them around with cameras everywhere they went and recording everything that they did. So it was, from what I got, it was a pretty neat experience. Some of it, their product, they can't talk about for six months. They had to sign a non-disclosure agreement where they can't talk about the product for six months, but everything else they can talk about. So find one of them and let them talk, because they had a great time and it was a real neat experience. FBLA districts, they were held recently. We had 50 medal winners and 29 events and 20 people are going to state. I saw a Facebook post that I had shared from about four years ago, I think, and we had, we were excited, we had like 10 or 11 kids going to state. So 20 is really pretty awesome. FCC LA hosted Star Events, two received top goal and advanced to state, and two made it on the Regional Executive Council. We had nine staff members between the middle school and high school attended the Powerful Learning Conference in January, and it was some pretty good sessions, some good takeaways there. Speech and debate, Macy Pearson and Braden DeWitt finished fourth in Duo Interpretation, and Cale Martin sixth in humorous interpretation at the Mountain Grove. And we also had a group of, I think, five students that went to Mizzou for their hackathon, which was also one of the people instrumental in putting it on was one of our alumni, Martin Leia. And we got up there and we had two that were in the expert competition and placed second. They had to code some kind of game, and they finished second. That was Jack Thompson and Matthew String. And then we had our intruder drill, which has already been talked about. And then at the Chamber of Commerce, we had the Youth of the Year, and that was Emma Spence. So that was pretty neat to see her get that award and Nikki Wake get the Teacher of the Year Award. It was a good night for Willow Springs School. Upcoming events, we got a, well, maybe, we're supposed to have PD Day on Friday, we'll see what comes of that. February 18th to 24th is FFA Week. February 21st, we'll go to the rural schools and talk to the 8th graders, incoming freshmen about what's good about Willow and see if they want to come be part of the Bear family. February 22nd, Math and Science Relays, those are done virtually, so our kids will be participating in that. February 27th is our student showcase, that's a busy night, as elementary and middle school had the book fair going on, and elementary's got some other stuff going on, so that'll be a fun night. And then February 29th is our CTE Advisory Council meeting, so we'll get people from the community beyond campus and talking about those programs. And then March 8th, we're taking another group up to St. Louis to visit Hancock Place School and see the things that they're doing, that'll be middle school and high school and some of our district employees as well.
Different group from last time?
Different group from last time, yep.
At the rural school fair?
Yes.
Do all the rural schools come there?
Yeah, they all bring groups, they're 8th graders at different times and go through, and we have a presentation for them.
Are you the only one there?
Nope. It'll be several of us, we usually take a few students.
Okay, my question, are we the only school?
Oh, other schools, no. There's lots of various schools there.
Okay.
And everybody's got a presentation, and we try and make sure that ours looks a little better than anybody else's.
Is there a transfer portal?
Not yet.
We just needed an NIL group.
Any other questions for Mr. Smith? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Arlene?
World of Special Ed this time of year is crazy busy, it is the season for referrals, and so we've been testing every day that we can when school's in session. And if school's not in session, I feel like we get dragged behind. So if you see any of us out and about, that's what we're doing. We'd like to share that we have recognized some Special Ed staff members for our teacher crowd this month, which will be tomorrow. You may not be listening, but we're recognizing Josiah Smith, who was a graduate from the high school last year and become a parent for me, has done an exceptional job in the middle school. We grew a fantastic young man that does a wonderful job working with kids. The month before, we recognized Andrea Sandoval, she's also a middle school teacher for a job well done that she does in the 6th grade Special Ed classroom. I forgot, three teachers, or three parents, actually, one of them is a teacher right now working under provisional that will be completing our first graduates with the Pathways to Parents Program. Becky Murphy, Maria Cook, and Myrtle Prudt will be our first graduates for the Pathways Program. This is a program they started last year, and it's in conjunction with Missouri State University. And part of the classes, there's some core classes that they have to take with the university itself. Most of them are either an online course or an evening course that they take. And then I teach several classes here for them, some foundations of special education, assessment, understanding assessment scores, and then like field experience type of classes here for them. By doing that, it allows those three individuals or others that we would choose to go through the program to take the courses and receive college credit free of charge, since I'm teaching them here for them. So we'll have three graduates this year, and they will graduate with their degree. Mrs. Cook already had her bachelor's degree in business, so she'll actually graduate with a master's degree in special education. And then Myrtle, she will graduate with a master's degree, she had already had a bachelor's degree in history. And Becky Murphy will be graduating with her bachelor's degree in special education. So we're really proud of them for being parents for us and then going on to become wonderful teachers and growing our own people. So we're really proud of them for doing that. And several teachers are also participating in professional development. Mrs. Cook, who works in our high needs room in the middle school, and Mrs. Kaufman will be attending a conference in the next week or so, put on by the Thompson Center about developing a classroom that's inclusive for students with autism. It was a training free of charge that they invited us to attend, so we're lucky they get to be a part of that experience. And then tomorrow, myself and the building principals will be attending a GoCSB conference on how to effectively lead IEP meetings, so I'm understanding the roles in those. Any questions?
Been busy.
We've been busy, yeah. That makes time pass faster.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Parker. Oh, Colton, you're up.
All right. This month, I don't have a whole lot to give back on our report, since I knew I'd probably take up a lot of time talking about the phone policy later, but I have some stuff to share for this up here. Starting off with our club news, FBLA, like Mr. Smith mentioned, the district leadership conference went well, a lot of members qualified for state. I remember years ago, we were even happy to have at least a few members, maybe even some go to state, but now, like he said, over 20 members go into state, 50 of them getting medals, incredible achievement for them. FFA, the science team, which is an incredibly hard contest, probably one of the hardest in FFA, they went to their state contest and they placed fifth in the state of Missouri, so congratulations to them. Don't know about this guy, Colton Stolba placed fourth in the state at his state speaking contest for the Young Farmer and Young Farmwives Association. Very nice meeting you there, huge opportunity, I've loved every bit of it. So really great to see opportunities and us get stuff like that through FFA. Lot of learning there. And four students also placed first in proficiency awards, and they're going to advancement state contests. Those proficiency awards are awarded to those people who keep great records and have an excellent SAE, which is a supervised agricultural experience. That's something where they pick an ag project to do throughout their year in high school and FFA, and they get rewarded for that through proficiencies. FCC LA, they have their star events, like Mr. Smith mentioned, two people, Emma Wiles, Kaylee Pendergrass, they both placed gold and they will advance to the state contest. They also have their fundraiser going on right now, selling strawberries, that's probably one of their biggest fundraisers of the year. And they also recently finished their biggest fundraiser, which is the Valentine's Grams. And Mrs. Ryan said they sold over 800 of those Valentine's Grams, so that is a big product for them, a lot of money goes in them there. Madison Bay and Kaylee Pendergrass, they recently were re-elected as regional officers for FCC LA, so props to them. Those two are also going to be attending legislative shadowing, the 27th and 28th in Jefferson City, so that's very exciting. Beta Club, like Mr. Rogers mentioned, the Uganda fundraiser went incredible, so we're right here. I was going to get with Mrs. Tyler today, obviously that didn't happen, but I know a lot of money there and just a few cents can change those kids' lives. So throughout the weeks, I saw them, really high numbers, so good to hear that much. I was thankfully able to get with the middle school and the elementary student leadership team, talked to them, and so I got a little bit of a report from them. They want a few different things, I just asked them what they thought. They like the idea of a longer lunch and a shorter recess, so I know some of them probably like to eat just like us high schoolers, and recess isn't, they know they're going to lose recess in high school, so it's not become too much of a priority to them. And they also have a lot of issue with their bathroom, they want either more bathroom time in between classes, like sometimes they're upset they can't really go to the bathroom as much. And there was a whole, we had a very big discussion, I guess you could say, about with them, but they have a lot of great ideas. They also have a lot of problems with people getting punished, like them as a whole rather than specific people, for example, the bathrooms, the entire grade gets punished, they're not a huge fan of that, rather than the people, they don't like having to sign in, but we did in high school, so it's an issue. Moving on to the elementary schools, they had a lot of ideas for elementary kids, very impressed with them. They think maybe a lot more computer time, they really want to learn their computer skills. I know they said that last time. Maybe more time, I don't know if it's they want to learn more typing, or if they want to learn more cool math games, not sure, but they would like computer time. They also said longer time in specials, so that's their special classes, like PE and music, they wanted a little longer time in there. They also didn't like how the special classes were timed, they thought they were timed kind of weird with a different rotation. In the high school, we have our block scheduling, and so we'll see someone at least once a week, but with the specials, like the kids that miss school Monday today, they're not going to see that class all week, they're not going to get together that special. And I know, talking to Mrs. Larson, she said that they do, they went to visit some schools and they do some things a little different, almost like a block scheduling, and so maybe a little idea there. They also, I was very impressed with this one, they wanted more time in science and social studies, they thought they could really learn a lot more from there. They also wanted more classroom books, especially nonfiction books, they were really getting into nonfiction, so maybe a few more nonfiction books. And they wanted more activities or equipment for recess especially. And I know those kids, they love to play, and so maybe some equipment may help them. They also talked about the idea of flexible seating, they think the seats are sometimes a little uncomfortable, so flexible seating is what's referred to, like your yoga balls or different kinds of seats. They were really intrigued with that. Mrs. Larson also had talked about the idea before, so a lot there. And then finally, comments and concerns in the district, which is the phone policy, but we'll save that for later in this meeting on the separate agenda. So that's my report. Any questions?
Elementary kids that want to hold the lunch hour?
Yeah.
Were you writing all that down?
Elementary kids want a lot, I was impressed with some of their ideas.
I like the flexible seating, that's good. Was that all grades, or what specific, do you have a specific grade you were talking to there?
Yeah, so the first one, like I said, the flexible seating, different lunches, all that, that was elementary school. I thought it was their leadership team, but flexible seating was specifically elementary.
I know, what grade though?
The leadership team is the 4th grade, so that was their idea, but Mrs. Larson brought the idea for the entire elementary.
Sure, Valentine's Day is still popular, it's always my favorite time. And bathrooms are a big topic of discussion as well, that's good.
I kind of might tie into the cell phone policy as well, just a thought there.
Thank you, Colton, you were very thorough with that.
I will say that the Change for Change for Uganda, I think the district raised about $1,800 for that, so that's phenomenal, our kids and our families, we know that, our community has a huge heart for that. So you'll see more of that in the coming weeks, but that was really awesome.
Yeah, and Maddie, congratulations on making your deal with that, that Mr. Smith was talking about. Mr. Knapp told me about it, he couldn't contain his excitement.
Yeah, it was an incredible experience.
Can't wait to hear more about it.
All right then, I think we're ready to bury it for these guys.
Hello, everybody, my name is Melana Wilson, I'm currently our NHS chapter's president, and this is Matty Four, and she is the vice president, and that is Luke Mansfield, and he's the parliamentarian.
So last year, so at the end of the year for NHS, we go on an end of the year trip. So last year, prior to the end of the year trip, we went to Jefferson City. So we made Jefferson City, and we toured the state capitol. While we were touring the state capitol, we met with our district representative, David Evans. We talked with him for about 15 minutes, and then he gave us special access to go up actually to the very top of the capitol, it's like on the steeple, and then we just walked around up there. And so then after that, we went ate at Texas Roadhouse, and that was a very good meal. And then we went off and toured the state penitentiary. So like the picture, this was after the Ghost Tour. So the picture is Tate sitting in an electric chair, I don't know why, but so I did not have a paranormal experience at the Ghost Tour, but some did, but you know, that's up to them. But it was, all in all, it was a great trip, and I'm excited for this year's trip, so.
So for our initiation, that took place November 7th last year, we inducted 10 new members, 18 are totally, or 18 total are in our NHS chapter, so we're open to juniors and seniors. And it was ran by our senior members, so all of us seniors who came back from last year. And our guest speaker was Dr. Marty Spence.
So because we had so many new members, we kind of wanted to highlight some of the stuff they had to do to even be considered for NHS. In order to be considered, you have to have 32 hours of community service your junior year. I believe if you're a senior being inducted, it's a little bit more.
Forty-eight if you're a senior.
Yeah. And then you have to have a 3.7 GPA, so you know, pretty high, we hold high standards of scholarship. And then you have to write an essay that is then reviewed by a committee. And then in general, you just have to exhibit the core values of NHS, which include scholarship, character, service, and leadership, and that's kind of determined by a like committee of teachers, an anonymous poll, I believe, yeah. And just kind of how they see you interact in the classroom and with your peers and with teachers. And then as far as this year's goes, our upcoming stuff, we're looking at doing a street cleanup event, possibly something with Adopt a Highway, we're kind of finalizing some details on that. Upcoming, we have the Senior Banquet that the junior members will be helping to serve at, and all of us will be helping to set up. And then we're finalizing some details for our end of the year trip. I believe we're looking at St. Louis, kind of looking at some of the educational opportunities to go and look at some cool things and learn a few things up there. Are there any questions?
I was the guest speaker.
The guest speaker was not in NHS when he was in high school, so I'm not sure how he qualifies.
You guys, I can remember, wasn't too long ago, there was this handful of members, you guys have come a long way.
Yeah, I was going to say, for the past few years, we've been getting more and more members, which is a high accomplishment, especially at Willow. I know our, like speaking from people, speaking to people from other schools, I feel like we have one of the highest requirements, so.
Good. You got one.
No, show ahead.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, just a quick question.
Yeah, you guys have the option to leave before I present us some great data here, so we have that option right now. And you can leave that door open, because the heat is blowing right here. Yeah, that's right, that's exactly, yeah. I stand up and people leave, so.
Chris Wagner, do you want me to adjust the air?
No, no, it's good, it's good. All right, about this time every year, we go over the ballot scorecard and some of our data that's related back to our CSIP plan. And as a matter of fact, if you look at the scorecard itself... And as a matter of fact, if you look at the scorecard itself, Dr. Spence will switch the slide there. If you look at the scorecard itself, the first column is filled in with the goals that are, that correspond with each measure. And if you look at your sheet like this, mine's in black and white.
Your CSIP document.
Yeah, your CSIP document. I think it's the backside of your document, Wilson, or.
There is no backside.
There is no backside.
This is just the basics.
Yes.
We don't, yeah, I don't give them the rundown.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, 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 you want the overall five goals, yeah.
You'll get the gist of it.
But anyway, if you ever wanna look at the quality indicators that go with the, with the goals or the different objectives, you can see what one point one actually is or one point seven, so I didn't spell those out in either this document or the explained version of the scorecard, so. Then all data on here is valid as of February one. We don't, we use February one every year to give you guys a snapshot and compare data from one year to the other, how we did, how we're doing compared to the prior year. Now, one other thing I want to explain, twenty, our, this is twenty-three, twenty-four data in the last column. Some of the, some of the data is not, has not happened yet, like for example, we haven't map tested yet. So that will be blank. We won't have that data until, fully until about the middle of July. So you do have, you can see our twenty-twenty-three data, which we didn't have on the scorecard this time last year for MAP and then going all the way back. Eventually, this next year, I will take twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty off of the scorecard. I wanted to have five years worth of MAP data when I, when this year's is filled in and, and. Actually, we'll probably drop twenty-nineteen after, after this next year, so. So we'll probably, you'll, you'll have, you'll see the COVID year disappear off the scorecard eventually. All right, so if you'll, switch to the next one. This is, the first four indicators are overall MAP scores in each subject area. Twenty-two and twenty-three data are based off of MSET-SIX data. And so you see two indicators in each column. This is one thing that you guys requested last year on our, on our ballot scorecard. The first one is the, is our MPI data. That is, that is a measure that we use internally to help us measure how much our students have improved from one year to the next. It's an overall measure of how, of our kids who have tested in ELA and math in grades three through eight, and ELA as well for the English two EOC. And then for math, in math, the Algebra One EOC, and for some students, Algebra Two. And then, and then math, uh, science, uh, grades three through, three, eight, and Biology One scores are reflected here. And then in social studies, our only MAP-tested area is Junior, Junior Government EOC. Okay, so, so this last, this final line on this particular screen represents only one grade level. Some seniors taken as well. So you could see, according to this data, our, our only comparable data, like I said a while ago, is between twenty-two and twenty-three. We did make improvements overall in most every subject area in, out of all students taking the MAP test, with the exception of government, and we were one student, literally one student away from being, making that an improvement as well. So with the smaller sample size, I thought that was a, I thought that was, I thought that was a good thing to at least stay even from one year to the other, so. The second four lines measures five through eight. Those represent our student group, our student group data. And according to MSET-SIX, our student groups represent five areas, five demographics that traditionally score lower on the MAP or the EOC. And as you, if you were to, on your, on your scorecard, we don't have to flip back and forth on the screen here, but if you compare this, measure five to measure one on your scorecard, you can see there's, there's quite a significant gap between those individual, those student groups combined compared to the overall number. Do you guys have any questions about MAP data on the, before we move on?
So not fully understanding everything that you just said, but it's showing basically that we improved in about every area.
Correct, correct, yeah. And yeah, and I forgot to mention, the second indicator in each year, that's the number, that's the percentage of students that scored either advanced or proficient on the MAP test, those upper two tiers on the MAP test, or the EOCs. Okay, the next four, the next four indicators, nine through twelve, those are, the first ones are ACT composite score. This represents the number, the average score of our graduates for those years. So twenty-twenty-three data represents our graduates from the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The twenty-four data, this is what our current seniors have averaged so far. Now, we have several students who are still taking the ACT, taking the national version of the ACT to try to improve their score. And so this number will do nothing but go up because it's an average of their best score, okay? So we, we'll probably have about four or five that'll probably take, go ahead and take the February or April ACTs and hopefully we'll see better scores because of that. The ACT work keys, this is, these are the students that test during that current year. So we'll have, I think we have about ten juniors who are gonna take that instead of the district-paid ACT this year. And that, instead of a, instead of a college readiness test, they're taking a career readiness test. And so, so those students, those students will, hopefully, these will be, this number reflects the number of students who earn a certificate or a nationally-recognized credential through ACT work keys. Right, then the one that we always have a lot of discussion about is I Ready. And indicator number eleven represents the percentage of students who have, who have met their typical growth line. I'll show that on the next slide here in a minute. And then the numbers, the percentage of students who have met their improvement goal in math. And, and if, as you can see, this number, anything in yellow on the, on your ballot scorecard is still in progress. This number does nothing but go up throughout the course of the year. As when, we have had, through two tests in I Ready, forty-two percent of our students who took the first test met their growth goal in the second test, okay? And then, and then in math, thirty-two percent of those students met their growth goal. At the end of the year last year, we were at fifty-five and fifty-two percent. But if you look back at February, February one last year, we were at forty and thirty-two. So we're up a little in reading. We held steady in math. And that's grades, right now, one through eight, who have tested multiple times. Marty, can you switch to the next slide? And what I mean by typical growth, you can see this student, this is a fourth grade student. Any student that is in this green area, they're, they're on level, they're on grade level right now, okay? And the green line means that that's the middle of, considered the middle of grade level, okay? So this student tested at mid-fourth grade their first time around. Their second time, they tested just above mid-fourth grade, but you'd see they made an eight-point gain between their first and second one. This black line right here represents typical growth, okay? So by the end of the year, the student that scored here on the first test should be at the black line at the end of the year. And then this dotted line represents stretch growth. We meet it early, hey, let's see what we can do to get you to the stretch line.
Okay, which subject? I mean, is that all subject or one specific subject?
This is one student in reading, I believe.
This is the same principle for reading and math.
Yes, it's the same, same idea for reading and math. This is just one student, one example. So, so this student wouldn't represent, if this is in reading, this student doesn't represent one of the forty-two percent who have made typical growth yet. Many of our students that breach typical growth do it on the third test, which will be toward the end of the year.
Oh, no, just silly question. I mean, looks like we're doing better at this point as we were last year.
Yes.
You think that's due because we switched math books, math, how we did it? Is that maybe an option?
I, I would, I would say that would come up more into play next year with, with our K through four math because, you know, the first year, we're still trying to, we're trying to figure the series out. Overall concepts are still the same, but you know, there, sometimes there's a little growing pains trying to switch from one, one series to another. So I, I can't, I can't say that. I can answer that question right now. I think it's, I think it's, considering the fact that we have switched series to say that we're even from where we were last year, I think is, is, could be considered a win at this point.
So with this, go back to that one if you don't mind. So what, I think what you're telling me is this particular student improved, but they didn't make the growth level in that column that you had up, right?
Correct.
I mean, they actually got better, but they just don't get counted as in that group as a typical growth.
That's correct, that's correct. And when I report this in June, hopefully that student will be at that line. And we'll see significant gains and probably hopefully numbers that are either comparable or greater than what they were last year. That fifty-five, fifty-two percent that you see in twenty-twenty-three.
This particular student that you kind of are showcasing here, is that what you see generally speaking as a maybe an average or whatever in the, in the kind of the stair steps of growth?
The, the idea is there, yes, that we, and this may not be an average student that as far as growth. Some, some students you'll see maybe a fifteen, twenty-point growth or a jump between first and second. Those are, those are the kids that a lot of times do make the typical growth line in their second try. Sometime, and then, you know, you have some things that vary on the, on I Ready as well, especially if you, as you get into the higher grades, you know, that's where sometimes attitude comes into play or effort. And, excuse me, and so many, many times we see, we see scores go down as a result of that. If, if the, if teacher monitors, monitors throughout the test that the student wasn't given much effort, they will make them retake it.
Maybe I should say it a little differently. Would you consider this growth typical or atypical in a normal-type setting? I guess is that like kind of what you would generally see?
Yeah, this is what we're hoping for. We're hoping for just stair-stepping growth. It doesn't matter necessarily what the growth is, as long as we are seen in person.
Does, do we determine the typical line?
No.
Or does the, the curriculum or the, how do we figure that out?
I Ready itself determines that they have.
And is that different per student or is like this is the typical growth it should be?
It's, it's a typical growth based upon, off of what they score in the baseline test.
So that's determined off the first test?
Yes, yes. So if a student, let's say a student scored, this one scored five eighty-three, let's say they scored four fifty. Okay, so they would, they would measure a typical growth off of four fifty rather than five eighty-three. And this green bar would probably be way up here compared to where it is now, because they're probably way below where they were at that time. Anything else about I Ready?
Do we have like, like on the, on the data from twenty-three, on that line eleven, just for example, like on the readings, fifty-five percent? Do we have a goal as the district of what that should or what we want it to be?
Personally, I, I like, I like just seeing steady improvement. I, you know, like last year, I was, I was encouraged about, going back to twenty-two on math, going from, or twenty-one, going from forty-two coming out of COVID to forty-six to fifty-two. I mean, I love seeing that, that type of growth. And then, then going from thirteen to seventeen, attendance, our ADA, our ADA through, or our attendance percentage, I should say, through, through February one is ninety-four, twenty-four. This time last year, we were at ninety-three, fourteen. We were, we were experiencing tremendous illness in December and January last year. We haven't seen that hit us quite yet on a district level. I would, I would say if, at the end of this month, when we run it, it will probably be, I would, my guess is gonna be below ninety-four with all the days we've missed and all the illness that we have had since we've come back from the break, from Christmas break. Let's see, we are in the process on number fifteen, taking the access test. Excuse me, elementary just wrapped up last week. This is our, and then middle school and high school are still testing. But all of our students who receive services, English language services, mostly are Russian-speaking students. We do have a few that speak other languages in their home. The students are receiving services. This is a test that we, we look at to determine if they are achieving English proficiency. And so they're in the process of finishing that test up this month. And then, and this year, we are serving fifty-two students. That number was higher at the end of last year than sixty-seven. I believe last month, Mr. Rogers, Dr. Johnson talked about the fact, we had two families from this particular group of students move out, and that, that represented, I think, seven, or no, about nine or ten students so that were receiving services. So that's, that's a, that's a big chunk of, of the students that have, that's the big reason why our numbers have dropped because we've had students move out. I was looking at Mr. Schmidt's numbers and on his, and his dropout numbers and discovered they didn't match. I am, I'll get back with him, probably update you if there were any seniors in that number. But this is the graduating cohort and the number of dropouts we've had in there, and I'm hoping I didn't miss anything on that, so. Then district mobility rates, this is the number of students that have either moved in or out of, or the percentage of our, of our overall enrollment numbers, the percentage of students who have transferred in or transferred out or both throughout the course of the year. That number last year was at twenty-two point two percent. This year, it is just above twenty percent. So we haven't had as much movement this year as we have, as we had at this time last year. Excuse me, more of our transfers, most of our transfers happened over the summer. And overall, it seems like we get them in spurts, so I'm kinda, we had a few after Christmas break, but it didn't seem as many, like as many as we've had in the past. So this number does nothing but go up with students who transfer in or transfer out. So I'm hoping that we don't get up, get up to this twenty-five percent range. My, my overall goal is to be below the twenty-nineteen pre-COVID number. And if we do that, I'm, if we do that, I would consider that a huge win this year. Our kindergarten, our kindergarten screener, this is the kindergarten observation form that we give for the KOF. This is given to every kindergartner within the first month of school. And it measures anything from motor skills, social skills, academic skills. And it comes up with a, the screener, or the, we, our teachers enter the scores for each category. It comes up with a readiness level for, or the test does, comes up with a readiness number for, or determination for each student. Last year, our first year using the KOF, thirty-eight percent of our stu, of our kindergartners or incoming kindergartners scored, were considered kindergarten-ready. This year, that number jumped up to forty-five percent. We can, we can consider a couple of different things. Number one, I think our teachers are more familiar with the test. They went through a number of how to administer the test. They went through another round of training last year as a refresher. And, and so that, that helped them, I think that helped them to be able to administer the test. I would like to say that our, that our, our students are a little bit more prepared. But as Mr. Rogers talked about a while ago, he, getting together with Head Start was a, was a good stepping stone to try to up those numbers as well. Marty, we can go to this next slide there. I'll show you a little bit more data regarding kindergarten readiness. Our students that came from, we have forty-one students that came from our preschool. They had either morning or afternoon preschool last year. And, and just fifty-three percent of our students scored kindergarten-ready on the, on the KOF. Well, the forty percent, forty-six percent of them did not. Some of those students were, they would, they would go to Head Start in the morning, come to preschool in the afternoon. So they are rolled in, those students are rolled into this forty-one, but they are. Uh, so they are rolled in, those, those students are rolled into this forty-one, but they are not, uh, rolled into Head Start. These are students who exclusively went to Head Start. They, when they didn't go to Head Start, they either went to daycare or went home. And, um, and those, and those students out of the eight, five of those eight scored, uh, kindergarten ready. And, uh, and so that, uh, it's a small sample size, but it was, uh, it was, I thought that was a pretty impressive number for those five students to score kindergarten ready. Uh, and then if they received no early childhood education, they did, they weren't Head Start, they weren't in our preschool, they either went to daycare full-time, they were in the house, full, uh, in their own home full-time, uh, whatever the case might be. We had twenty-one students that fell in this category and only twenty-eight percent of them were kinder-, were considered kindergarten ready according to the test. So I, kudos to our preschool and to Head Start as well for trying to, for, for at least, uh, uh, for at least providing some social skills and, uh, our preschool providing academic skills as well to help them to be better prepared for kindergarten. So I was, I was very happy with, with those results, uh, that they did release a statewide average and I think we were, we just felt short of that as somewhere just below fifty percent. So, uh, so anyway, and that, those were, I believe that was based off of the KOF.
There were seventy students in that particular class?
Yes, yes, and.
It's a small.
It is a smaller group of students, yes. Uh, probably one of our smallest.
Smaller than usually is.
Yeah, kindergarten classes we've had in a while.
Is that, just by me figuring it, I've got like seventy percent that went to our preschool or Head Start and like thirty percent that didn't go to anything. Is that kind of the typical number, seventy percent, thirty percent of the kids gone or anything every year or, you know?
Uh, I, I did, I ran this last year and I, I really, I can't remember what those numbers looked like. I knew there was, I know there was a significant gap between our preschool and no, no education.
But you don't know.
No, I don't know. All right, and then, um, I didn't go, I didn't go over, oh, wait, you, you went back to it.
Did you want to go back?
No, you did, you, you did, all right, all right, duplicated a slide somewhere, but, uh, these numbers, uh, indicators twenty through twenty-four, uh, represent our students who are going to, uh, to South Missouri Technical Institute or what used to be South Central Career Center. They're doing VOTech classes down there. Uh, we have forty-one that originally enrolled and we currently have thirty-seven that are in there and then we just had four that, uh, that went into full-time here at Willow at the semester, is that correct?
Uh, I think, or there may have been one that moved.
Okay, and then, um, and then go on, go on past that, there we go. And then we, uh, we have ten students who have started launch classes here on, most, uh, almost, well, all of them are on, uh, are on campus. Um, and we, after first semester, four of them have completed, uh, a semester of, of at least one launch class and, uh, and six more are currently taking classes. So that's why there's such a gap. So I would, my, my, uh, knowing who is enrolled in those classes, I would suspect that that will, those, these two numbers will match. We'll probably have ten of ten at the end of, uh, this semester, uh, unless we have somebody move. Uh, and then, uh, our free and reduced lunch rate is at fifty-seven point four percent, which is, uh, slightly down from where we were this time last year, but we had students move out and that our final number last year was fifty-six point nine. Um, and then you can see our September enrollment K through twelve is down significantly from where we were last year. So, uh, that, uh, that, uh, so our ADA numbers when, at the end of the school year will probably be a little bit lower than what we, uh, what we wound up with at the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, uh, unless we have more students enroll. Um, I, I doubt, but that's our September count. I, I, I don't know what that's gonna look like at the end of the year, but, uh, our September counts are, are kind of our, our date that determines a lot of things. For example, uh, when, if students are going to be held accountable for the math test for, uh, if they're not held, if they're not enrolled on that date, uh, then, uh, they, they will not fall in, fall in, or not be scored on our APR at the end of the year.
So we're losing about thirteen kids every, every year?
Yes. And this year, this, this year compared to September of twenty-three, or actually September of twenty-two.
Well, it's going back to twenty nineteen.
Yeah. Yeah, if you go all the way back to twenty nineteen, that's it. That's correct. All right, any questions? Thank you.
I do have a request.
Yes.
Uh, hopefully last year, we were getting a more detailed I ready report. Uh, you guys remember the color code?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I'd like to, I'd like to have a, be able to see those.
Okay. I think those were, excuse me, provided by the individual buildings.
Yeah, that was, that was a few years ago that the, and we can do that, we just need to know that, that's a direction for the principals to.
Yeah. And just one other thing.
Yes.
Did, did you say on like these first, like the first four lines?
Mm-hmm.
This, this larger number like this three ninety-nine point three, that's an internal number, did you say that?
Yes, we use that internally a lot. Uh, it, it initially when we first built the current C SIP, we were going to use that as an indicator of, uh, of progress from one year to the other. And, uh, last year when I presented this, there was some confusion about what that number meant, so I included.
I asked that last year, so everyone asked it.
Yes. So I included the, the percentage of students who are advanced in proficient and that's, that's a little bit more clear.
So that number means something to you guys?
Yes.
Okay.
And does the state provide you that number?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, when, when they, when our.
That's how they use it.
Okay. Yeah, that's how they measure our AP on.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Do you want me to sit down for a minute?
Yeah, I want, uh, Mr. Wagner to take a little breather. He's got a big night, he's, he's not done, but, uh, we'll give him a quick break and move on to our food service report. Um, Regina Roberts could not be here tonight, but she has provided a letter that you have and I'll, I'll hit the highlights of that for you and, uh, give Mr. Wagner a chance to catch this, but we talked about food and service. Um, and the free and reduced lunch number that you just saw, that kind of ties into this as well. Um, so Regina writes that they've been focusing on lunch debt this school year. You may have seen some stuff, Jenny's done a nice job of promoting that within the community. Um, she's proud to say that we had a great response from the community and parents regarding, um, donations to help with school lunch debt for those families that can't afford, uh, to pay off their debt. Um, we looked at the lunch debt policy for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Parents or guardians receive a phone call once their student debt hits twenty-four dollars. Looking at a phone call and a letter at fifty and two hundred, uh, we try to work something out with the parent or guardian so we don't have to turn them over to debt collection. Parents can also see their student's lunch debt on parent portal at any time. And, uh, Regina wants to emphasize and, and I do as well, students never treated any differently, um, have the same options as the rest of the students, no matter what they owe. We do not, um, give them a peanut butter and jelly sandwich or something like that if they, if they're not, I mean, it doesn't matter how much debt they incur, they, they're, they're still going to give, they're still getting the school lunch, yeah. So just make sure that myth is not out there. Uh, next year we should have the free and reduced lunch application online. The higher that number is, the better it is for the district as far as financially. Um, and we encourage parents and guardians to fill that out. We still have paper copies available and be handing those out at open house, but having it online hopefully will help maybe keep those families, um, a little more anonymous and you can just do that without feeling like, uh, we're, we're in your face trying to get you to, to sign a paper. Um, Regina writes that it's brought to her attention that people are wondering where the money went for free meals. The money that we received during the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two school year was from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services. That was during the COVID area, uh, not the national school lunch program. So funding was no longer available and we had to go back to pay lunch. So you remember those two years where nobody had to pay for lunch? Those were the glory years. Staff didn't have to pay, it was fun times for everybody. That went away with, with all the other stuff that went away with COVID, so that's, we have to, we have to, uh, charge for lunches again. We're looking at options for free meals, but have not made any decisions with the House bill, twenty-three ninety-two that was introduced. Um, it's currently being looked at for students in the state of Missouri for one free breakfast and one free lunch, and we're following that bill closely. That would be fantastic if we could go back to those, um, free breakfast and lunch for kids, anything like that, obviously we're gonna take a really close look at. Um, as everyone's aware, food prices are absolutely absurd at the moment. That's Regina's quote. We're currently trying to do more to offer the student, um, do more offer to the student. What that means, it's a way so the student has an option of, um, do you want this or do you want that? So we're not loading up the tray with items that the student doesn't want. Um, and sometimes, um, you know, the tray may look different from three different, or maybe three different options on that because they get to choose what you're gonna eat. If you're not gonna eat it, let's not let it go to waste, let's, let's give it to somebody else. Um, so that means the staff puts the main entree and a couple of other items on the tray and the student's able to choose everything else. Uh, we'll have new standards next year, um, of course, just like everything in, in education and, and it's a government bureaucracy, so there are some, um, new regulations that will come out in June for our food service department, speaking of food. So that's Regina's report. She's doing a great job for us. I appreciate Regina a lot and really that's a department that, um, kind of goes under the radar, really, um, and the amount of work and effort and, um, money that comes through there, I mean, it's just, it's a big operation and, and we're certainly appreciative of Regina and the job she does to, and our community. I mean, that, the debt thing, um, you know, she came to me with that and then we talked with Jenny to get that out there, but, um, it always just, it shouldn't surprise me anymore, but, but it always does, our community's so big that she's got some huge donations from people that, um, just say, hey, we want X amount of money to just throw it at kids' debt, so that's, uh, that's very much appreciated and really a nice, uh, nice gold star for our community. There's the food service report. And now guess who's back? I won't turn that into a song.
I don't know, I don't know what to say, that is a derogatory comment.
Uh, it was still in this one, right?
Yes, yes, it's, yeah, go beyond that. Uh, district assessment plan, that is just something that, that's a document that we have to have for approval every year. It outlines our procedures in testing and our, uh, and our assessments, what they, what their, what their, why, uh, their measurement, uh, our measurement goals, that sort of thing is addressed in there as well. I, and I, unless you really want me to present the whole thing, I'm just going to leave it at that and just ask that you approve that this evening. Uh, the other thing I have on the agenda is a textbook order for middle school math. Uh, if you recall, last year we ordered, uh, we ordered math textbooks for grades K through four. Uh, we're going to, uh, I'm asking that we order textbooks this year as part of the, uh, ongoing process or stair stepping process of, uh, I'm gonna ask, I'm asking for textbooks, math textbooks for grades five through eight as well as extending agreement we have for our pre-algebra and algebra one classes. So can you, yeah, go to that. Uh, this is, I, I provided that, did that go in the package?
It should be in your quote in the bio.
All right, so, uh, we are looking at ordering from two different vendors. Uh, we're, the first one's from Houghton Mifflin Hardcore, HMH, as I'll refer to it the rest of the night. Uh, if you notice that we are going to, uh, we're going to order Go Math for grades five and grade, and six. Uh, Go Math is an extension, uh, will be extended from grade four, so that was a series we ordered last year for the elementary. Uh, then, uh, we're gonna order a full set for, uh, for, uh, for fifth grade, uh, sixth grade after, uh, speaking with, uh, Mrs. Spencer, uh, she, uh, she, our sixth grade math teacher, she said that, uh, she indicated that she would like to, uh, have, uh, have kind of a pre-pre-algebra class, uh, trying to accelerate learning in math in the, in sixth grade as well. And so Go Math was good for a majority of the student population for sixth grade, but to try to accelerate learning a little bit, uh, among the top students, uh, she, uh, she indicated that she would like to, uh, order Into Math, which is the same series that seventh and eighth grade would like to order. Go Math only goes through grades K through six, so seven and eight had to look at a different series. Into Math is the HMH equivalent to, uh, or the extension, I guess you could say, to, uh, to Go Math. So, uh, so that, so we're, we're looking, by the time they reach eighth grade, uh, coming out of elementary, uh, and in, in this next six-year cycle, they should have at least six years of, uh, if they're starting in grade, uh, second grade, for example, second or third grade, uh, they should have, uh, have either Go Math or Into Math all the way through eighth grade, uh, unless they go into, uh, pre-algebra or algebra. Speaking of those classes, uh, uh, after talking with the, uh, with the, uh, pre-algebra teachers in, in seventh grade and in high school and then the algebra teachers in eighth grade and in high school, they came to the conclusion that they would like to go ahead and extend their digital agreement with their current series, which is through McGraw-Hill. Uh, they have, uh, the traditional hardback books. This bid up here is for disposable books, which is what we currently have through Glencoe Math for these same grades. Uh, but, uh, but in pre-algebra and algebra one, they have hardback books. They say, they, they said they're still in great condition and so we, uh, I put out, uh, or asked for a quote from McGraw-Hill just to extend the digital part of it for the online lesson plans for, uh, student engagement on, uh, digital student engagement as well, uh, comes with that. And, uh, they gave me a one-year quote and a three-year quote. The, the one-year quote was about five thousand dollars, going three years, basically saves us one year, uh, a one-year, uh, fee. Uh, so we get two, or we get three for the price of two basically by going with this. So, so, uh, so a six-year agreement with HMH for these classes and then for pre-algebra and algebra one, uh, a three-year agreement comes to roughly, comes to about eighty-three thousand dollars. Uh, one thing I did check with, uh, with HMH, and I know this is all, every time I order textbooks, you guys ask about shipping, this is a discounted shipping rate. So it was, it was almost eleven hundred dollars a year whenever, over six years, uh, whenever he first sent me the quote, uh, he was expecting me to send, to ask for a shipping discount, so he had it within a day, so I would say he already had it ready for me. Uh, professional development also comes with this, this is, uh, with the HMH, uh, this is two units of that, one for Go Math, one for Into Math. So this is basically two eight hundred dollar sessions to help our teachers become more familiar with the digital platform, uh, cause they will be switching from, uh, from Glencoe McGraw-Hill to this HMH platform. So, um, so about eighty-three thousand dollars, uh, for, uh, but consider the fact that we're getting an extra three years out of our existing books and that's saved us quite a bit of money over purchasing new pre-algebra and algebra books.
What's the shelf life, you think? I mean, do we ever know how long a series will, will continue to teach that?
Um, the, now, the, this, are you talking more about the upper levels or this?
Either one.
Either one? Okay, so the typical curriculum cycle is a six-year cycle and so our six-year agreement's up with Glencoe McGraw-Hill. This is what they came up with last year means. Uh, but a series is only as good as it's, I, I, as long as they keep it in print and it, it varies by company. Uh, McGraw-Hill guaranteed that this will, it's, it was, it's a twenty-eighteen copyright. They, they, they guaranteed that their digital resources were gonna be good through twenty-twenty-seven, so we should be able to get print resources if we need them. We can also go on the used market if we need them as well at the, at this point. Uh, HMH, these are all disposable books, they're the, they're the books that, you know, the old workbook type books, I, that's about the best, that's the way, that's the way I looked at them when I was in school, uh, but, uh, those, those are only good for the one year. We get a refill of those every year. So we get, we, we purchase one, we basically have a six-year subscription and in that time we get one hundred per year. If we need more, we have a bigger class, we'll order extra. So there, there are some other costs with it, that they're very minimal. As a matter of fact, uh, at the end of this, this cycle with McGraw-Hill, uh, we're, we, especially middle school, I think we're gonna have a surplus that we're going to call a used vendor on, uh, to purchase those from us. So if they, if we, if we can sell those, sell those unused ones, uh, disposable books that we have, we should get, we should recover a little bit. It will be pennies on the dollar, but it'll be something. So, uh, so if you approve this tonight, this is what our, uh, math, math rotation would look like, grades five through eight, just the, the four regular series. Grades five through eight, just the, the four regular series would go through the 2029, 2030 school year, which means I would have to go through one more curriculum revision cycle before I retire. The, uh, Glencoe Accelerated Seven, uh, uh, book, uh, is what we have for pre-algebra. The, and then going to algebra one, if they're current, if we extend their, uh, digital license three years, that takes us through 26, 27. And then we reevaluate from there. And, you know, math, math's math, uh, for the most part. And, uh, as long as our books are, you know, meet health standards more than anything else, our, our, our teachers are pretty good about taking care of them for the most part. So, I, I'll stock with that. You have any other questions about math books?
How's the, uh, elementary feeling about their?
Go Math, rocking better. Yeah, I mean, there's obviously a few little hiccups along the way, but no, for the most part, they're happy with it. They were much more happy than with Eureka.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. That was a lot. We appreciate all the work you did on that.
Alright.
Policy revisions.
Uh, first one, policy IKF graduation requirements. Um, in the fall, we came to you and talked about, um, the need to have three math credits in high school. Because if you don't use math for a while, um, and you need it in the future, it's hard to do. So kids who take two math credits in high school and say, hey, I'm done, and then go to college two years later, go to a trade school or go to a job where they need math, that's, that's difficult. So we asked to make that three math credits in high school, and that was approved. Um, and then we had some conversations, uh, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Dr. Johnson, Dr. Spence and I. And what we don't want is to discourage kids from taking challenging classes. We don't wanna discourage them from taking that algebra, pre-algebra and algebra in the middle school. Because, hey, I gotta take pre and. So we want to ask to change that policy that if they take algebra one in middle school, that they can get a math elective credit. So they would still be getting a high school credit, but they would still have to take three math classes in high school. And so that's, that's what we're asking here. That way we, we encourage those kids to stay on that high track so they can take those dual credit classes in high school. And they're not, hey, I'm getting my math credits and I'm done. We feel that's a, that's a fair way to reward those kids, um, and encourage them, hey, this is still here, attainable, to take these, uh, dual credit classes. And we talked with middle school math teachers and high school math teachers, and we thought that was a fair way to go, um, all around. So we'll be asking you to approve allowing that algebra to count as a math elective credit.
Now with that, they hit eighth grade, uh, pre-algebra, and they still be a third, but they don't, can they drop back down to general math? Does it, can you down grade and keep it or is it all?
There's a track right now. We don't have a general math or, you know, a class like that. I don't know how far into weeds we wanna go. There are some things that we've talked about, um, that could allow a math credit by taking some other courses or, uh, another way is possibly waiving a math credit, um, if they meet certain requirements, such as a carpentry class. If you had two years of a carpenter class, you're getting a lot of math in that carpenter class. So it could be something that we might bring to you and look at and say, if this student has taken two math classes and they've done two years of carpentry, can we waive that third math credit?
Kind of like four years of ag, you get a science credit out of it.
So that's a possibility. Until next year, we wouldn't, that's not something that we would have the ability to look at as far as that math credit. But it's something that we've discussed and wanna try to get that, a policy developed for that, that we might then bring to you. But we, we wanna look at ways that we can get credits to kids when they're doing the work, um, even if it's not in the traditional math setting. Any other questions about that one? Okay, policy JGR2, um, student discipline. So there is a board policy on cell phones and other devices that currently says we can prohibit them from school. So we are not asking you to ban cell phones because that's already in board policy. That is something that, um, hasn't been enforced to that level. There's been some freedoms given, um, but that is in board policy currently. Um, what we are gonna ask you to do is to look at the discipline regarding those devices. Currently and actually, I think for some of it, we actually want a lesson from what it actually is in the board policy. I believe the board policy, first offense with a cellphone is in-school suspension.
One day of ISS, parent pickup and parent conference.
And what we would like to change that to is, um, parent pickup, if they have lunch detention, um, and then they would change. I think you've got that, they have that in front of them.
We have it in email. I don't know.
So then it would change from there.
But the parent pickup means pick up the phone.
Parent has to pick it up from school, yes. With it, we would take it and the student, we wouldn't hand it back to the student. The parent would get it and then be able to do, give it back to the student or keep it or whatever they would wanna do.
So real quick question.
Yes.
First time you say parent pickup and the student says, I'm not giving it to you.
Yeah.
You need to put them on insubordination on that point, you, and that's not considered part of the cellphone?
That's correct. That would be insubordination if they're, if they're not doing that.
You're referencing the student not giving the phone up, is that what you're referencing?
Yes, yes, cause that's, that'll happen.
That, that does, that, I mean, we have that, occasionally we will have that. Most of the time, um, you can talk to a student and say, look, what do you wanna do here? And, but occasionally it, it does end in that. So, I know this is, we've, we've talked with some students in our student advisory council and believe it or not, when you talk to those kids, they go and talk to other people. And so, you know, our first conversation around this was in December. So there's been lots of discussion. And so what's the big deal with cell phones? Okay, um, cell phones, number one, our concern here is classroom engagement. Students are at school, we want them to be engaged in class, we want them to learn the best that they can. And I think Dr. Spence may have showed, shared an article with you, and I can't remember, I've, I've read lots of them. Um, there's a study that if you have your cellphone, e- even if it's turned off sitting on your desk, your level of productivity drops. Even if it's sitting under your chair, level of productivity drops. For some, for some, it's an addiction, um, just like other addictions. They have to know what, whose messages are messaging them, what's going on, did they miss something? And, and they become consumed with that and less so about everything else that's going on. And that's, that's our purpose. Our purpose is here, be, to be here to educate students and we want them to get the best education they can. That's number one. Number two, or I don't know, I don't know if I have numbered, I guess, but discipline issues. I talked to another administrator from the school and he said, I bet 70% of our discipline issues are related to a cellphone in some way or another. Whether it's bullying, social media posts that we're putting up during school time or at night, text messages where we're saying things to people that we shouldn't, threatening, calling names, um, videoing people, whether it's in public, whether it's students are getting into a, a conflict, whether it's in the restroom. Okay, we have way too many things going on that shouldn't be at school. Class disruptions and I could go into all kinds of different classroom disruptions. And you would probably be amazed at some of the ones that I could bring up. And then there's cheating. You can cheat. I've got a smart watch. I can text on, well, you can text on this? I haven't figured out how, I can, I can receive texts? And they tell me that I can send texts on this, I can control the music on my phone, I can take pictures. So instead of looking at my watch to see what time it is, I can be looking at the study guide that I took a picture of right here on my watch. All those are related. The cell phones, the earbuds that I put in my ear, oh, I don't have a phone, but it's Bluetooth to my ear, earbuds that I'm listening to music instead of listening to the teacher. Cause they get good at hiding those things too, especially if they've got longer hair, it's real easy to, to cover those up. So all of these take away from classroom engagement. They're a distraction, not only to that student, but to other students as well. And so these are reasons that we want to enforce our no-cellphone policy. And one of the questions is, but they use them in that class. This would be for all classes, not, oh, your class, it's okay if you use them in there, because we know how that works. If we make an exception there and somebody says, oh, they're doing it over here, we can do it in here. Okay, so it would be all classes, we would not have cell phones. As a matter of fact, it would be from the time you get to school, you come in the building, no cell phones. If it's seen, that would be a violation of the policy. That's what it says, they can't be displayed, anything like that. Until the end of the day, when, the end of their academic day, which for most of them would be 3:15 when the bell rings. Unless they have credit recovery or attendance recovery, which goes to 4:15. Because we want them engaged, we don't want them distracted, we don't want them to be disruptive. Kids are involved in activities. Activities, activities, the three kids we hear are all involved in activities, requiring them to do things after school. Or maybe they have a job and they need to do things. So we would have something that would allow them to have their phone at school if they needed it. So they would have access to it at 3:15 when they're out of class. Or if there was an emergency and they needed to do something, they could come to the office and say, hey, I need to do this. And, and we could, uh, allow them to use it. Uh, some of you saw this, I put it on the table before. So, these are yonder pouches. You don't trust it, you can put my phone in there. So you put that in there? You can put watch in there, there's room, you put earbuds in there, lots of room. And then you take it, push that together, and now it's locked. So I can't get that out. So if you had one of these, they could keep this in their backpack, they could keep it in pocket. They won't be able to access it until time. If, you know, if you needed to, you can cut this open with a pocket knife or a pair of scissors. So if there was an emergency and you needed to get into it, you could. But if you have it out of this, then you would be in violation of the policy. Then you have these, these are portable, you can get ones that you can mount and screw this on or off. And you just take it. And you get your phone back. How many places, um, we haven't, we haven't figured that part out yet.
I just wondered if it would slow up getting them to the bus.
They're, they're pretty quick. Um, so we would, we would have, we would have enough that there's not gonna be a line of 50 people waiting.
One way or the other.
Yeah.
Don't be predictive, we lose, or how much time do you think we'll lose morning, afternoon, dealing with that?
Well, in the morning, all they do when they walk in the building, and it's done.
So that's on them.
Yeah.
Or leaving it in their vehicle.
Or leaving it in, they wanna leave their phone in their vehicle? Perfect.
So probably just, how many buy the pouches and how many actually use them?
Yep.
Can I ask a question? And my question is that you referenced earlier that there was no pol, the, the policy states no phones now. And now we're kind of adjusting the offenses a little bit. Is it, are we going to enforce this much more strictly than maybe we haven't been in the past?
Yes, so I'm not sure.
Pointed at me there.
I'm not sure what the date of the policy is. I, I, I looked at it, but I'm not sure. I wanna say 2014 maybe?
It's, it's been a while. It, it's been long enough that, um, pagers are mentioned. Yeah, so we are gonna tidy up the, the wording there. But it's been a while and, you know, we knew, we knew it was there, but, you know, I, when I was the assistant principal and then the high school principal, it was a thing, it was a problem, but we've seen a huge staggering increase since COVID. And I think that's probably, I mean, that just escalated the, the addiction and the amount of, um, just awful things that go on on the phone.
Can there be good uses for phones and stuff? Absolutely. Our drones that Mr. Nath uses, they have, you can use a phone with them. Now the school has bought, they're not the greatest phones, but they have, we've bought phones that they can use to fly those, so they don't have to use a personal phone. So there are, there are things that could be good with phones. And that's kinda why I think I wasn't here for the start of that. But I think that's why, because I know that's how it was other places. Hey, these can be used as a tool. So if the teacher says you can use that, then you, it's okay to use. Well, the problem is, the teacher says it's okay to use that and then this kid starts doing other things. And then this kid starts doing other things. And hey, we can just use our phones whenever we want to.
So we're just gonna tighten that up?
So we wanna tighten that up. Um, does that mean now when we use our phones for some things in class, we're gonna have to find something different? Yes, it may be that we're buying some generic phones like with the drones. It may be that we've gotta use more Chromebooks and things like that. So there'll be some adjustments on, on that side of things. But I, I truly think, and, and from the places that I know, um, that have done this, the classroom engagement goes up, person-to-person conversation between the students increases. We see an improvement in those social skills. So that's, that's why we wanna do it. Not because we don't like kids and we don't want them to have phones and we don't want them to have fun. We want them to be engaged in the learning process.
Other than articles, like reading articles, and we've read some of them, like have you reached out to these schools that have utilized these and put this in place and got any feedback?
There's a, a school in St. Louis that implemented it over the summer. And they said, it's amazing, the conversations that you see now that you didn't before, the engagement in the classrooms. I don't have data as far as, have grades improved or test scores or anything like that. But they said unbelievable.
But Dr. Johnson, you guys have been running this in the middle school for a while now, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So really crack down on that before Christmas sometime?
What's that?
You can really crack down before Christmas on them?
Uh, yeah, we made a little bit bigger deal, but it's been our, it's been our policy, policy that they don't have phones, but at least since I've been here, so. So they should be used to, sorry, it should be used to.
I've got a, like, I've got a smart watch. So are you taking my watch too?
Yep.
How about school trips, you know, people get like taking pictures?
School trips. So, um.
Well, after hours, yeah, that's, that's all good. It's just the school day.
So, school trip. We, we briefly had this conversation, it wasn't a lengthy one. The purpose is classroom engagement, the academic environment. So if you're on a school trip, I think that's, that's a different environment. But, yeah. So I think there, that becomes, do we need these? Is it okay? And that's a conversation with who's in charge of that trip.
Have you seen many of your problems come from, arise from trips or is it all mainly during the day on campus?
Um, I'm sure there's some on trips, but most of what we see is, is on campus. So, believe it or not, kids, I think, are better behaved when they're on trips than maybe sometimes in the, in the school building.
So you're saying your kids act better at someone else's house? So you're saying your kids act better at someone else's house?
And I think part of that is an emphasis on, hey, you're going out and representing yourself and your family and the school and the community when you go on these things. And I honestly do, I think they behave well in those situations.
So in the middle school, they just can't have them out, correct, they just got to be like off or turned in a, in a backpack or something?
You didn't bring it out, though.
So that doesn't work in high school, it just? Yeah, I, so going forward to what he's saying, they can put it in their backpack and walk into school and it's no big deal as long as it is not brought out?
If it is seen.
What if it's heard?
For any reason, or heard.
Heard.
Okay. Yep.
Okay. It's a calculated risk.
So when Colton put it in his backpack and we didn't see it? Maybe, is he going to be okay? If we don't see it or hear it, we're not going, we're not going to take everybody's backpack and go, let's see who's got a phone.
Yeah.
That's, that's not, not our goal.
So these wouldn't necessarily be necessary for every student, correct?
Correct.
Either leave it in your backpack or leave it in your car.
Completely optional, yeah, completely optional.
Just if you feel like you've got to have it.
If you need to have it.
Nearby, like a medical, you know, something like that.
Or, hey, I've got to have it because maybe I don't drive, but I've got to have it because I've got practice after school and I need to make sure that, you know, I can get a hold of somebody or something.
We have a student representative on the, the board, and I know he's, he's prepared to, to counter.
Just so you're, this, that policy is elementary, middle school.
Yeah, it's a district policy.
And high school, we are just asking to change the discipline part of that at the high school.
Is it, do you follow the same dis- discipline, or, I mean, do you follow the same path as high school would, or do you have a different standard?
I know that we talked about that.
They have, I don't know if we finalized, if you guys were going to change to what we were looking to change.
The last thing I talked with, with Cochran was we were going to do exactly what they did.
And it's not a problem for you at all?
Rarely.
Just like.
Thankfully, it may, it may, it's not a problem.
Some of those kids that talk to Colton, you'd think they were careful.
And they may be, we just don't see them, hear them.
Colton?
All right. Seeing that we can remain out here, they're also students, I'll let them be free to say whatever they want. Yeah. Get ready for the questions. As mentioned in February, I told you I'd come back to report on the phone policy, here we are. I talked to students, I got their opinion, and I'm coming here with feedback. And I will say, conducting my research, I, I saw a new side to these students that I normally hadn't seen before. I realized how much they do care about this policy and how much a phone has meant to them. And I saw a much more professional side to it, and I was really impressed. And I really believe that you all will too, so. I personally believe it just shows how much they care about this, so we'll dig in. So obviously, like Mr. Schmidt said, the pros, I'll agree with some of the pros, it does remove a distraction in class. Students aren't going to pay more attention and they're probably going to take more info. Uh, cyberbullying also drastically increases, it's going to be gone pretty much. And also Florida, they know, they've recently done, they're done with phones, banned them completely. And like Mr. Schmidt said, they saw more engagement in students and interactions in the classroom. However, when it comes to the cons, I have a lot, obviously, because, again, it's it, but there was no contact in case of emergency. However, with the pouch, there's going to be some contact in the emergency, and I guess, will that stay in the office? You won't have one of those, one of these?
We don't, there'll be several of them, I don't know how many.
Would it be like in a room or?
Um, these are portable ones that could be in different locations and we could choose to have some mounted that we can take the part off and put it back on when we need to.
Okay, so originally, there was no contact in case of emergency, and so I received a lot of quotes from many of the girls who all said the same thing when it came to this. It was along the lines of, what if I have an emergency, girl, female problems? If I need something, I'd like to text someone so they can help me. Many of them also said that they didn't feel comfortable talking to a teacher about it, no disrespect to any of them. And that they felt like if they did, they would only receive a peck of it. Although, it does remove cyberbullying in school, it doesn't remove the case completely. I mean, cyberbullying will still happen. Now, this, when cyberbullying, so that's happened, it's not going to be the school's problem or fault. However, these kids are still going to be affected by the cyberbullying. Now, it's going to hurt them enough, and if the phone's allowed, they go throughout the day hurt. But at least with the phone's allowed, they can do something about it. When the phones are removed, it gets rid of this problem, and not only do the students have to walk out through that day hurt and knowing they're being bullied, but they have to live with the fact that they can't really get as much help as they used to be able to. Most of these students have a connection to their phone, almost as a stress reliever. Removing them would essentially remove some of the students' only connection. Like, when you put this phone in this case, as well as a watch, your watch won't be able to do anything anymore. But if you have the watch, once this phone loses connection, I can't text or do anything on it anymore. Although I do believe they have some versions where you can buy data, but that's up to the student, I guess. But just like when that phone loses connection to the watch, some of these students are going to lose some of their only connection. Which, that's a big issue, there might be some other alternative. And a lot of other students complained that a lot of their hard-earned money just seems, feels like it goes down the drain. One of my quotes was from Tyler Shanks, he says, I know a lot of kids spend their hard, own hard-earned money on phones, and I feel like denying us access to them just doesn't seem right. It also removes ability of communication. Justin Luer says, I need to know what's going on for sports. Athletes and club members can't figure things out as efficient with me, efficiently. And what we use, the remind app, the SportsU app, appears to become pointless. Although emails are an alternative in after school, but going through the process of logging into a Chromebook just to check your email is much longer and much more time-consuming than just getting a reminder via your phone. Plus, not every single room has Chromebooks. We'd have to travel across a room just to figure out if I have something going on. As well as VOTech kids, if they have something going on after school, they're going to have to walk all the way to the high school to get a Chromebook to figure out what's going on for sports, unless they keep their phone in their car. Now, I'd like to use an example from the other day. I'm going to go off, and we're currently going through offseason practices. And on my walk down back to the, during the school day, actually, we received an alert during school that there was a big change in practice. And if I didn't have that phone, I would not have had a clue what was going on, would have missed it, nothing would have been new. Corbin Lowe says that my dad constantly calls and texts me throughout the day because I need to pick him up or if I need to go do something with him, refuses to do something with me. If I don't have a phone, I can't contact him during the day, same with my mother. Tucker Bryan says, I don't know if my dad will be home from work, he doesn't work consistent hours, so it could change three or four times a day. This determines whether or not he'll be able to get me from school or not. And if I don't have my phone, I can't know these things. Phones are no longer just a source of entertainment or something that people have, they've become essential. I recently remodeled Walmart, got new carts, fancy, right? In these carts, though, you can find not only a cup holder on here, but you'll find a slot for your phone. Now, why would this be implemented if they weren't something that everyone had, and if they were a part of our life? Abby Weddington says, high school seemed to be, to me, a place where you had more freedom. Not allowing us to have our phones and learn when to use them and learn when not to use them in high school. In high school, we learned things that'll be applicable in our lives after high school. I feel like it would be better to learn how to handle this freedom by knowing proper times to be on a phone. Because today, it seems like it'll be something we'll need to know and use. And I believe that here at the school, we're here to prepare kids for their future. And I found a study that phones are now a big part of the workforce. Over eighty-three percent of the workforce, to be exact. Removing them just feels like we're almost preparing less. Going back to Walmart, the other day, I went into Walmart and searched up an item. Now, when I couldn't find it, like anyone else, I asked a worker, and what did they do? They whipped out their phone, right there, and they pulled out their phone, their work phone to be exact, and they told me exactly where to go. Many blue collar workers also use their phones to converse with their bosses on their projects and relay more information. So it is no doubt that having phones are definitely a big part of the workforce. Now, how I use my phone in school, like Mr. Schmidt said, there's a lot of classes where I actually do have to use my phone. I start my day off multimedia one with Mrs. Lee. Now, in that class, there's only two cameras, but there's ten students. If we have to film a project that day, good luck trying to film a video with two cameras and ten students, have to make ten videos of two cameras. However, with my phone, I've used editing softwares and that camera has saved my life on some of those projects because I go right on my phone, and sometimes I can edit a video faster on my phone, almost five times more faster than I could on my laptop or on a school computer. As mentioned before, Florida recently put that ban completely on cell phones, and I wanted to provide some of the parents' feedback. The parents agreed with the idea to ban cell phones in the classroom through the engagement, but they disagreed with the outright ban. Parents said that they should be able to contact their kids throughout the day, even if it's not necessarily an emergency. Many parents also have Life360, and they want to know where their kids are at all times. And I believe that they have every right to, but getting rid of their phone, and does this thing have a data blocker or anything, or is it just locking it up?
Just locks it up.
So I'm not sure how Life360 works, if your phone's powered off, if they can still track you or not, but some parents want to know where their phone, or their kids are. And a lot, myself and other students also came to the conclusion, they said that, they mean no disrespect, but they think it's no secret to anyone that the technology in the school does not operate nearly as efficiently or as well as the cellphone does in some cases. Now.
Those are from Florida parents, correct?
Those are from Florida parents.
So not specific to Willows? VOTech directors. I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
After multimedia, I'll step into biology, in which I believe is one of the classes I learn the most in. Now, another class that I believe I and other students learn the most in would be American government. Not only are they essential things, but the number one reason is because we have to put our phones up. Those phones don't stay in our pocket or in our bag, they're required to go on a chart, and if you're caught with it, it's gone, you get that offense. Now, the reason is because we're not connected to them, we're not thinking about them as much. Now, there will still be some connection, but if my phone's not near me, I don't think I'm going to be thinking as much about my phone, and I'm more focused on the class. Now, I can testify that a lot of other students have also said that those are classes they learn the most in are the ones without the phones. Not the ones where they do keep their phones, obviously, that's the ones where you're getting all of your issue and people are jacking around and not doing good. It seems that phones aren't really necessarily the biggest problem. Chloe Jones says that phones don't seem to be the problem in school, they've been allowed for over ten years, and now we're going to blame them? They don't appear to have been a problem before, maybe we should look at what actually changed and what exactly started the problem. However, like Dr. Spence said, they were allowed, but it seems like there's been a spike, so maybe we investigate what the cause of the spike is. What about the phone is the cause? Mr. Schmidt, do you happen to know what?
Well, I think as Dr. Spence said, I think COVID played a large role in it, when everybody was at home, um, they spent lots more time on their phones, and that has continued, um, in all walks of life.
So they're just wanting to be on their phone more, is what essentially is. Alex Mort says, I don't see the reason to take them away from the kids who don't misbehave, it's the kids who use them wrong that are the problem. Completely banning them doesn't seem like the best solution. He then says, why cut down the tree because of one bad apple? Phones can actually be used for good. Mason Owens then says, teachers use their phones as tools to aid them in doing their job education. And I can testify that, teachers are always constantly on their phones, sometimes more than us students, not every teacher. But they use their tools to accomplish many things that would be more difficult on their computer, or if they're away from their computer at the time of needing something done. So surely the establishment should understand that just like teachers, students can use their phones to aid them in learning and use the school's curriculum in certain circumstances. Excuse me. Now, although it can be argued that by many adults that we didn't have phones in school, so we should be fine, that isn't the case. That is what a lot of us have heard. However, we live in a very progressive world, where nothing ever stays the same. Times are always changing, and most of the time for good. Some adults didn't have computers in school, but we do. Some adults couldn't carry firearms in their vehicle during hunter seasons, but we don't. Some adults left the state or even the country for their senior trips, we go to Branson. Some adults had open campus lunch, they could even leave the school to go eat lunch, we stay right here. Some adults, I don't know if this is a certain fact, but Mason Owens told me this. And I've heard some parents say this, I've heard some parents say this before, but some adults had a smoking porch at their school for those legally allowed to smoke.
That's true.
We obviously don't. So, it is apparent that times change, and we have to accept change. Here at Willow Springs, our mission is to improve the quality of life through the quality of education. Now, Willow Springs, I believe, is known for not going with the flow. It's okay to be different and to get used to different. We don't go to school four days a week, we don't cancel school just because others cancel school. We've always been different. And I truly believe that it is a major part of our success. Perhaps rather than completely just banning the cell phones, there's an alternative solution out there. Maybe we can truly take a step and try to be different. Maybe we can figure out how to utilize this piece of technology for a much better purpose, just like computers did. Phones are the future, and we believe in the future. Therefore, I believe that phones should remain a part of our future and stay in the high school. And I've opened up many questions.
No doubt, while you're winning rewards.
I think you did some good homework, Colton. I would, I would like to, to say a few things there as far as the need to get a hold of a student. We have phones in, I don't know of any room that we don't, don't have a phone in. So if there is a, an emergency, a phone call can be made from that phone, or the office can get into the classroom. As far as preparing for the workplace, you're absolutely right, and I can name several places where you cannot have a phone at all. You go to DRS, if you're on your phone, you're going to get fired. If you work in a courtroom, you're not taking your phone. You ever been to a courtroom? Even if you're going and sitting and watching, you got to leave your stuff, you can't have it in there. Okay, so that, part of that is preparing for the real world, it's not, not take your phone wherever you want to every place. There's another one I was going to talk about. Teachers being on their phones, we've reviewed, there's a board policy on communication devices for staff members. Not, maybe not everybody knows that, but we have reviewed that with our staff and told them there are times when they are expected or requested to use their phone, that being with our security stuff or to make a hall pass for a student, um, and things like that. Or sometimes they have to communicate with me, and I'm not sitting at my desk at my phone waiting for it to ring. So there are some times when they have to, but there's also parameters that say when they should not be on their phone, and they are aware of that. Um, that's been shared with them, and, and that will be something that will also be looked at and enforced.
So may I, I want to add, and speak to you?
Uh, yeah, and then I've got a question for you.
Okay, perfect. So, we'll start with the phone thing. Like I said, many students, I didn't put it in there, but with the girls' emergency, a lot of the people also said they didn't feel as comfortable talking to their phone, they didn't want to hear that a loved one died from a school phone and from a teacher telling them. Moving on to the workplace part, if eighty-three percent of the workforce uses a phone, I feel like we shouldn't let the minority of the workplaces that don't allow it outweigh the fact that this phone is a big change, and in a lot of places you will use it. And then, what was the last thing we mentioned? The teachers, so, I'm not too sure on the teachers, I understand the policy, and a lot of teachers do use it for that policy. However, sometimes I feel like when we're trying to learn or something, and the teacher is sitting there doing this, it doesn't seem as much like they're doing what you even said.
They're not, they're not identifying a loved one like that, though, are they?
No.
I mean, that's not going to be.
I'm not sure.
No.
But that's what, that's what the students quoted, they didn't know for sure.
No, but that's.
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
I would just question, the, the cyberbullying piece that you talked about, I mean, that's a really serious issue, when you said, you know, that the student would do better to have their phone with them so they could do something about it, and I was just curious, what do you felt like they could do about it from their phone?
Meaning, meaning talk to administration, or talk to someone's, and explain what's going on, because like we mentioned in the advisory meeting.
Well, how does their cellphone help them do that?
Well, I'm, when I said that, I'm saying that if they're getting cyberbullied in school, and because of the phone in school, then the school can do something about it because it happened in school, but like we mentioned in the advisory meeting, if me and Luke got in a fight at McDonald's, that's the police problem, it's not the school's problem. So if we get rid of the phone and the cyberbullying happens outside of school, that student doesn't have any source of help, they, the school can't do anything about it, and so that student just walks throughout the day knowing that they're still getting bullied.
So you're saying the school involvement portion is what would be needed there, but if they weren't here, wouldn't that?
It would remove, it would reduce the problem, however, knowing it's still going to happen. A lot of the places I see are outside of school, and if it still happens, I feel like there, we have to find a solution to stop it, at least.
I mean, I, I think the school is completely on board, and I think that we would still be very much open to talking about that and trying to find.
Absolutely, and find resources, we have resource officers and, and a good relationship with the law enforcement agencies that we could absolutely.
And that could be something we could address in, in meeting itself, and as well, policies for that, because I know.
We certainly don't want to, we certainly don't want to not help students, you know what I mean?
I can assure you, there, there are a lot of things. I can assure you, there, there are a lot of things that are not school issues that, that students come to staff members with.
Absolutely.
That we will do everything we can to help them, or get them to somebody that can't help them.
Yes. I just understand that a lot of us don't like the idea of it just being locked away, like we've talked about the connection. We still want to at least know. But like I said, if every, if every room enforced us to make sure, like biology and American government, that we had to have that phone up, you're still going to get your engagement, I believe, and that student is still going to have its sense of connection, especially those who have that connection.
I got a question. When you said you're golfing, does your coach go with you when you guys practice golf?
Yes.
So if something was changed, your coach is there, is he not to tell you that it's changed, or?
I'm assuming you're saying that the coach sent the message.
The coach sent the message to say something. I found out during school. A lot of our advisors send us messages throughout the school day too. And I guess they could get on the intercom and say something. However, a lot of students will miss that in the CTE building, or if they're in other buildings such as the weight room. Sometimes they can't really hear it as well, when the weight room, if they're working out, all they hear is blaring music and iron racking around. And so getting that message as soon as they're done into class, in between classes. And I didn't ask, will they be gone at lunch too?
Yes.
Okay.
By the end of the building until the end of the academic day.
So the positive there, you'll have more engaging conversations at lunch, but I mean, some of those kids aren't able, as sad it hurts me to say this, they don't get able, they're not able to have communications as well as some other students there.
Well, hopefully that will-
Hopefully that will help, hopefully.
Yeah. Build some relationships and friendships and things like that.
That's a valid point, though. What, how is the district going to handle that if, if coaches and, and people are getting information through their cellphones throughout the day?
Well, they can let the office know. The office can make announcements, but that's also gonna make the coach have to make sure they know what students may not be getting at, and hey, do I need to send a message directly to a teacher? And say, hey, get this. They could shoot an email to a teacher that says, hey, this period or next period, make sure that these students know.
I know all the stuff that when I was in high school, you used to go hand deliver.
Well, and Robert, you handed, handling an extracurricular, I mean, how, how will this affect you, and how athletics and stuff communicate with students? Will there be an impact?
Your job is, yeah, I really think that we can communicate with kids fairly simple. If we have to make an announcement, if it's anything different because of the weather, or hey, we're gonna practice somewhere else, that's-
It can be handled.
That's very easily handled without, I think, I mean. Now, granted, they all have their apps. They love using remind app and things like that for the teams, and that's very helpful. You know, those things can be used after school hours still, or-
Sure, but you don't see it having a big impact as far as-
No, I mean, I just, I mean, really, well, I can't think of a scenario that would be a big issue other than a different practice location, or practice time, or practice canceled, and that's a, call the office and-
And Nick, so like, if a kid does need to, like, call their parents or something, they just go to the office and, like we did?
Yeah, I need to use my phone, you can use the office phone, or can I use my cellphone, because that's easy, because they don't have to know what the number is, because-
Yeah, sure.
Is there criteria? I mean, if you're talking about girls and issues or whatever, is there, do they have to have certain criteria, or can they just come to you and say, hey, I need to use my phone?
If they're at an appropriate time in class, hey, I need to call my mom, fine.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any issue until it gets to be like somebody that's clearly taking advantage of that.
If, if every block comes to call my mom, then that's different.
I'm just using this as an example. I, I don't know if this is, this may not be relevant whatsoever, so uh, like, I forgot my practice jersey. Is that something they could call their parents and? Or you, you like, come to administrator, something like that? As simple as that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, there-
In between class, you walk in, or?
There are phones in every room.
Yep, correct, yeah.
So-
But they may not know their parents' cellphone number. I don't know my mom's cellphone number. It's in my phone, I just-
Maybe that's something that could work.
I, I, back to my watch. Because he's, uh, Colton said, when your phone's in there, it's the same.
No, it's not.
It's not?
No.
So I can still, so I can still-
If, if it's far enough away that you lose connection-
If my phone's out of range, then-
But if I've got this, and it's here-
You carry that in your backpack?
But the watch would go in there.
There's no blocker in that. It's just a pouch.
Okay, gotcha. I, I was, I thought there was still some hope, Colton, I heard you say.
What's the AirPods too? I know, I don't, they could be used for cheating sometimes, somehow, but a lot of students and myself have a connection to music, and a lot of students don't like listening to music, so when you're in a classroom setting, teacher turns on music, you're not pleasing everyone. So some kids aren't going to want that music, and it's not going to be what some kids want. But if it's, if I'm just working on an assignment, yeah, sure, I throw on my earbuds, I listen to some music. And it doesn't affect me as much, and sometimes it helps me concentrate more. However, some people are different, like I said, so if the teacher turns on music, and some kids can't concentrate, I mean-
So if a Chromebook is available, you could use wired headphones.
You could, but wouldn't, wouldn't YouTube probably not allow access to some of that stuff?
I don't know.
Yeah, it's gonna be hard to find any music sites, I'll be honest. Because most of them are either paid, or they have a social media component, and most of them are going to be blocked, so.
All right, let's, uh, try to wind this up.
Any other questions for me?
No, stay at the way you go, later. I'm sure Luke has a-
He's ready.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Thank you, Colton.
Definitely spoke with the, uh, the people's voice there. Okay.
I'll draw his track, where are we at?
We are at the twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar proposal. I've shared drafts with this, with you guys, uh, at least two or three times now. Really not much different at all from, from this year's calendar. There's an extra day of fall break. And so teachers will actually have a little bit of a fall break there, and then students as well. Otherwise, it's, it's very, very similar. The reason we were able to do that was because Christmas is a flat two weeks. This week, we had two weeks and a, a day or two. Um, so we, we were able to take that day and, and put that in October on the fall break. But otherwise, that's a, um, very traditional calendar, and, uh, and that's what I would like to propose for the district next year. Any questions on the calendar?
It seemed like, just a couple of years ago, we had a lot less days in the first semester.
We've been able to balance that out a little bit.
How did we do that? No.
Um, my expert calendar making- Yeah, it's, uh, the, the Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving helps, we take two, we, instead of taking a full week at Thanksgiving, we only take three days. That's, that's a help.
Right, and wasn't that the issue?
It was unbalanced, yeah, the second balance was longer. But I think it's a good calendar. Um, I think it works well for kids and teachers as well, so. That's the proposal. No further questions?
No further questions.
All right. So summer school proposal, I'll let Mr. Rogers, he's still waiting back there talking about summer school.
The Tuesday afternoon Memorial Day, which this year, it's May twenty-eighth through June twentieth, it's just right there. Eighteen days, six bus routes, not really any change from, uh, probably down the past.
Twentieth and thirtieth, Chris.
What's what?
Our-
That, that's the twentieth, that should be the thirtieth.
That's, my bad.
My bad or your bad?
I don't know, mine probably, because I mess up dates consistently.
It's the, it's the Tuesday afternoon Memorial Day.
Yeah.
That's the ending is what we were asking about. The thirtieth?
No, it's twentieth.
No, it's the twentieth.
It's twentieth. It's June twentieth, yeah.
June twentieth, yeah, because it's only eighteen days.
Eighteen days, yeah.
Nine in the first half, nine in the second half. Typical summer school, elementary kids will be going to the pool.
Right.
I'm sure our middle school will do a little bit of everything, and high school's all credit recovery.
Middle school will do one field trip, and well, actually maybe two now. We did one like, uh, second Friday, then one the last Friday. So it's, like I said, nothing really changed from what we've done. But the pools closed, we're in trouble, because that really brings, decreases our attendance. So we need the pool to be open and going every day. So.
One other calendar note, um, that just happened today, that I'll ask for an action on in the, uh, items for action. Uh, we missed today, obviously. I'm gonna ask that the board, um, allow me to revise the calendar to take away Friday's professional development day and make that a school day, so that we can quickly make up that day and be back to where we need to be. I'd like to keep the April PD day if we can. Um, but with Friday's day just sitting there, that seems like a really good opportunity just to make that day up, so we'll be back where we need to be. We're still, uh, not even midway through February, so there may be some more weather before we're done. So, any questions on summer school or set calendar adjustment? All right.
All right. Comments from our guests?
Sure. Am I on time? Do I keep that up time?
I think we've got five minutes.
Couple of minutes.
Five, okay, that's good time. So I personally do not think taking away the phones is going to fix anything. Uh, we thought putting a vape detector in the restroom was going to stop people from vaping. It did not. We thought putting cameras in the student parking lot was going to stop people from keying cars and doing whatever. It did not. It's not going to fix anything, in my opinion. Now, I just want to clarify some things. Those pouches, are they being purchased by the school or the students?
Students.
By the students, okay.
Parents.
And if the phone is seen outside the pouch, or heard, even if it's inside the pouch, they're in trouble.
Not if it's inside the pouch.
If it's inside the pouch, okay, so.
But, hold on, can I get clarification on that?
Sure.
If it's inside the pouch and it's heard, they are not in trouble?
I-
The phone-
It should be, it should be off or silenced when it's in the pouch.
But I don't see this is what's happening from that point with, yeah.
If it's heard, we'll probably say, hey, get that turned off.
Yeah.
But we can't, are we gonna turn it off?
He'd come to the office.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'd say that if it's heard, you would need to see that it's in the pouch.
Yeah.
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 Okay, and then just my last point. So you were saying, Mr. Schmidt, that phones decrease production, correct? Students, if their phone's on their desk, decrease production. If it's under their desk, deat traction. Okay, well anyway. So my point is, is if it decreases production, then why don't teachers have to put their phones in the pouch? Because would that decrease their production also? And here's a counter offer. Ms. Martin, the speech teacher, what she does, she has a pouch for her phones, and if you, you're assigned a number, and if you don't put your phone in the pouch, you're counted absent. So my point is, is basically, I don't think the phones are going to work. I don't see why. If it decreases production, I think teachers also need to put their phones in the pouch, and I don't see why they aren't going to be allowed to. Because you also said, if they're going to communicate with you, and you might not have your phone on either, or you might not be next to your desk. If our way of communication is email, is your way of communication on email also? And is safety, don't you guys have emergency radios?
We is. We have multiple layers, because not, there's not a guarantee that everything will always work.
Okay, so the email emergency radios, that's not enough?
Nope.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
May I, may I add to some of that?
Uh, what, what? Yeah, really, comments from guests at this point, Colton.
Okay, I think these pouches, um, they could, they're like, I, okay, I agree with less productivity with cellphones on you. I'm actually the student who thinks that they're not helpful anyways. I think they have become a big distraction in school, but I think that these pouches, if that's like the final say of what we're doing, I think those are unnecessary. Because saying that the student has to buy one, we already in a financially needy area, so not all students are going to be able to do that. If the phone is, if, if the pouch's only reason is to, um, be not seen, the backpack would be the same thing. And I agree with Ms. Martin's thing, is having those in there, like I know the senior class, we haven't said anything about it. And, um, yeah, counting and math said that's good, but we are not on it throughout that whole class. I don't think it's a bad thing to be on your phones at lunch, per se, because as, I'm in a lot of clubs, that is how most of my advisors or coaches get a hold of us. Um, so I don't think the all-day thing is necessary. I was gonna say other things too, but, yeah, I don't think the pouch, like, okay, so I know the school did try to implement the, impli-
Not implement.
Whatever, implement, yes, yes. Stress, I'm talking to a lot of students right now. I know that they tried to implement the wall hanging thing, and most teachers did not implement it. So I don't think that's on the students for something the teachers have not prioritized. Like Ms. Martin did, and I know Mr. Kade did, and that's about the only teachers I know who have implemented that.
Do I answer any of that? I would just say that the yonder pouch is not, I mean, it's completely optional.
Okay, I was-
There is no requirement from the district that you buy a yonder pouch. That's just, if a parent feels like my child needs their cellphone with them, then yes, you're going to need to, to go ahead and do that. But there's no requirement from us. That's just an option.
So they can have them in their backpack, turned off?
No, they cannot.
Okay.
But we're not going to check everybody's backpack.
Okay.
Yeah.
So-
I was just trying to get around-
If it's never, if it's never brought out and never seen, then we don't know it's there.
Her point of the, the financial of the pouch, I was like, there is an alternative, because you'd said in, off.
Right, we're not going to go checking. Everybody get your backpacks out, let's see if you got a phone. That's not our goal.
I talked to a highway patrolman about concealed carry one time, and he said if you're doing it right, nobody will know that you got it or not. And I think it'd be the same instance with the phone.
Yeah.
If you're doing it right, nobody's going to know if you got it or not.
Are they right?
So that would take away the thirty dollars of the pouch.
Yeah, that's an option. That's not, you have to buy this.
And I, I just want to comment on, like, the teacher doing, and I don't know if I'm allowed to comment or not, but the teacher having the hangers in the beginning, in the front of the room. Um, and I've not been in that position to, or that was a requirement of me. But I would think that I would feel like that was a liability for me as a teacher, because if they were, if that pouch was something that I put up there, and something happened to a student's phone, or something along those lines, then I, as a teacher, could have been responsible for the damage, or another person stealing a phone out of that pouch, or a screen, it falling off the wall, and a screen getting dropped, it could be broken. Like, I would feel like that may not be the most secure, best thing to happen in a classroom. Um, not saying it's a bad thing, but I don't know that that would be the, the answer either, because you could have problems with someone stealing it, or something breaking, or that I could be responsible as a teacher for something happening.
Correct. There, they are better than, uh, to give you that option of putting them up, that is, that is a good step. But as she said, there are some liability issues that could be present. Um, I have known cases where somebody has taken somebody else's phone out of the pouch.
And also, yeah, like, medical emergencies, like say someone has diabetes and they need their phone on them, is there going to be an exception for them?
There, there are things that can be done for, with that, yes. That would be done on a case-by-case basis.
And Colton's bathroom point is very valid, because we're, that's the only way, without a lot of embarrassment to deal with that, is asking somebody else for help.
You can go to the office and get your phone, if that's a concern.
You could come to the office and-
Well, but most times you don't know, you'll just be going to the bathroom.
Well, there's ways around that. And there, obviously, we're gonna have to work through some logistics, but we want to take care of our students, for sure.
Okay, any other comments from guests? Then let's go on to items for action. In the district's assessment plan, I would receive a motion to approve the district assessment plan as presented in your packet. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right? Uh, would receive a motion to approve the purchase of middle school math textbooks as presented.
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Now, we'll move on to revisions to policies IKF. Uh, do we want to do this-
You can do it separately, work together.
Let's do, um, the graduation requirements concerning the math requirements in the math book for Algebra I. IKF, will, uh, I would receive a motion to approve revision to policy IKF as presented.
Seconded.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, now, policy JGR2. I would receive a motion to approve JGR2 as presented.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I would just encourage you guys to continue to work with your administrators and find the areas that, that this might not quite fit. You guys are excellent advocates for computers, and you guys have done a really good job of this, so continue to work with them and figure out what the best solution is, as, as we approve this policy and they figure out what they need to do.
Any other discussion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Uh, we'll move on then to the school- Uh, we'll move on then to the school calendar. I would take a motion to approve the twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar as presented.
So moved. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? And the summer school session. I would receive a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-four summer school session as presented.
So moved. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And, um, moving on to the accounting services. Motion being ordered to approve the contract with Thomas and Douglas Accounting for the auditing services.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, we'll scratch the Douglas off and, and Thomas. So Thomas, okay. Uh, motion was made and seconded.
You made this, sorry.
Debbie and Debbie, in one order, the other, I can't remember.
Any discussion?
There's one that's not up there and that's the, um, the motion to make Friday, February sixteenth is school day.
Okay, let's finish this over here.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, all in favor? On the auditing?
Whatever.